I'm going to call the Murfreesboro City Council meeting to order. It's a little after 11:30, December 14th. If you will, if you'll bow with me, I'll say our prayer and then we'll stand and do, have our pledge. Father, we come to you. It's a special time of year that we get to not only celebrate the things that have happened throughout 2023, but we also get to prepare and look forward to what you have for us next. Lord, I pray that you continue to bless this city, that you continue to bless this council, you continue to give us wisdom to make the decisions that are fitting not for our will but for your will. Lord, I pray for all of our employees, for those employees that have lost family members this year and are struggling through this time. Lord, I'm thankful for the people we have that represent us in our city. Lord, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of its justices.
All right. We're going to move. Ms. Brown, I don't think we had anyone sign up for our public comment section?
You're not.
All right. All right, we're going to move into our action items. We have renovations at 930 Kason Lane. Mr. Holtz.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. The item before you is a contract to renovate 930 Kason Lane, which is the daycare the city purchased back in May. This should be the last one. The only thing remaining after this is the parking lot, which will be done this summer. In approval of the construction contract.
Any questions for Mr. Holtz? Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ordnance 23OZ 36, rezoning property along East Northfield Boulevard and North Tennessee Boulevard, second and final reading.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ordnance 23OZ 36, rezoning property along North Manny Avenue and Lee Street. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ordnance 23OZ 37, rezoning property along Van Cleve Lane. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into ordinance 23OZ 38, rezoning property along East Castle Street, second and final reading.
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to airport workshop items. We have an airport update.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for spending your time earlier with us today and to the award. And I want to recognize a couple of people that are in the room here is Benson Hadley with Barge Design Solutions, who is our consultant on all of our work out here and connection to aeronautics and the FAA as we go through all these projects. And also, the key to part of our celebration today was Les Goldsmith with Vertower, really the key to the data that we built everything with. Les and his staff drove up from Florida today or yesterday and just to spend time with us today, and they're going to head back. So really wanted to thank them for everything they did for us. Typically, this time of year, we look back and review, but I think really what we're doing today is look forward in the airport projects. We just wrapped up the pavement maintenance project. Pretty much 98% of our airport was pavement was addressed in some way or the other. There's a couple of areas that are still going to be needing some additional work, and we're not able to get in this project. And one of them is around the T-hanger area, and we really have some cursed water caught under the soil here that is coming up through the pavement. And then the other area is behind Hanger Three, and this has some poor pavement and also has some slope issues. And this project is really kind of a combination with the road relocation to the access road that goes by the airport and also into McKnight Park. But by relocating that road opens up all kinds of new opportunities for ramp expansion there and correcting some of the slope issues that we have behind Hanger Three. This will assist us in our corporate activity, and we'll be working with the state and FAA on funding on those projects. Another project we have is the relocation of the fuel farm. The current fuel farm is right next to the terminal. We'll be moving that into an area down here by the T-hangers, away from the terminal, allowing us for more parking and situations there. And this is kind of a representation of what the new fuel farm will look like, and it will allow us much more capacity. For example, right now, we have a 5,000 gallon Jet A tank, and we've just seen our sales of Jet A continue over the last several years, and we're having to split our loads of fuel every time we order fuel. So that will give us capacity to go for several weeks without having to get fuel orders. For example, right now, the Mississippi River is down, and getting avgas is the situation because everything is barged up to Memphis and Louisville. So to have capacity, fuel inventory on hand is a key thing for us. The terminal improvements will continue too. Right now, just this year, we were able to put this road in here, which gave delivery of fuel and other items in here a nice access without having to bang around cars and cause dents and things like that. So from a risk liability issue, this was a really good investment here. We also, with this movement of the fuel farm, we can improve this area, green area, and maybe make it more accessible for people in the community who just want to come out and have a picnic and watch aircraft and things like that. Hanger Two is, as that hangar becomes available, this is really an older hangar, too small for a lot of the aircraft and operations that we have here. This might be removed for some green space, additional parking, things like that. And as we go into our next airport layout plan, Hanger Three will be evaluated to see what we want to do there, back to that ramp expansion that might give us some abilities for future larger hangars for other activities. The focus right now is really the development of these 27 acres here on the north end of the airport. There's a lot of things that are going on here. As you know, the expansion of the road here behind Chick-fil-A and Panda Express is a nice connection here. I hope that maybe in the future, we can even include Station Six, which would give Station Six a direct access right onto the airport without having to get out of Memorial or Dejarney. And so this is what that area looks like right now. We do have a lot of utilities through it and around it. We have a contract that will be going out here this winter so that this spring, we can start to kind of develop Phase One, which is in this area right here. We have a lot of demand for hangar space, but we don't have the area developed with hangar pads ready and taxiway connections. So we're going to be working on the utilities. Drainage is a big issue in here. The good thing about it is it's flat. The bad thing about it is it's flat. So the drainage is a big issue here in this area for this development. Here's a layout of kind of what, if we can kind of overlay what that might look like. And it's a combination of T-hangers, box hangers, and then some large hundred-by-hundreds, which can go in this area here. Kind of, if you will, our own kind of zoning here at the airport, some commercial type activity here, and then more into the T-hangers. This is the hangar development, what it might look like. This is TDK, for example, and here is like 100 by 120 or so. This is the type of demand that we're seeing and communicating with folks on. And then box hangers for anywhere size from 50 by 50s or some smaller for larger twin style aircraft. This will, of course, we're looking at wanting to bring in aircraft charter, corporate hangers, aircraft specialty services, and individuals, and we'll be creating some jobs and positive economic impact. Just like the Mike Jones, this is kind of some of the planning stages of the Mike Jones Hanger One project. We'll be going about this in kind of a two-pronged situation. The city development will be hangers for storage of aircraft, and land leases would go towards customers that are going to be bringing on a specialty service or something like that, charter, things like that, that we, that would require maybe a special type hangar. And most of this development will go through, be city funded, and we're working on developing the debt service retirement, which will also establish what our rents and everything like that will be for these types of hangers and land leases. As important as our pavement maintenance is, is also the approach maintenance and airspace management. So we have some short-term and long-term solutions there that we're working on as well. Right now, two of the tools we have are navigation easements that we control that were started back in the 50s when this airport was created. But we also have an airport area height ordinance. Those are two tools that will help us maintain these approaches. And for example, a short-term solution right now was during the pavement project, we moved the threshold of the runway to the north 300 feet, which will give us some time to address the area on the south of the airport. So we've surveyed this area south of the runway, and this is just a picture of what it kind of looks like if you can imagine the surface, this imaginary surface going up and away from the end of the runway. We're looking at these areas, surveying to see what obstructions we have, trees, things like that. They're called the Part 77 surfaces. They're imaginary. We can't see them, but they're there and are critical to how we get aircraft in and out of the airport. And this is kind of a drawing, if you will, of these imaginary airspace around our airport. We're going to be submitting, Barge and the airport are going to be submitting for a grant in January to the FAA, to the design work as to how we deal with the surfaces, the approach surface on the south end of the airport. And we'll be able to, once we get into that design phase, bring you much more detailed information as how we're going to deal with that. Airspace management. We have submitted our application to the FAA for the contract tower. We expect to get some sort of response in February or March. This will be a benefit to all users of MBT in the surrounding area, assist in transition from heavy flight training to opening up the airport to other operators and users. The economic benefit to the city creates new and different jobs and attraction to corporate users. Our measurable goals here will be fewer names on our waiting list and available hangers. For several, maybe a decade or more, we've been operating at 100-plus percent occupancy, and we really need to get so we have some hangers available, especially for transients coming in overnight, that we can offer hangar space. We'll see this in fuel revenue and hangar lease revenue and land lease revenue going up. Another thing for Vertower is that we will be able to monitor our aircraft operations. We should see fewer single-engine flight training operations and an increase in multi-engine business turbine and helicopter operations here over the years as these improvements are made. Our challenges and opportunities over the next five years are really the federal and state funding. That continues to be an issue. We're a block grant state, meaning that the state does get all the federal money, but the state disperses all that federal money. And according to JP, our director, pretty much the next five years is already decided from their office as to how that's going to be spent. So there are some projects, like what we're doing with the RPZ properties that we're purchasing and stuff like that, are just not making their priority list at this time. So we're having to go to other sources of revenue, which could be lobbying and talking to our representatives to include that on the governor's budget. Update to airport rules and regulations and minimum standards will occur. Just as these changes occur at the airport, we'll have to have that documentation and those rules and things like, for example, the airport commission has quite a bit to do with MTSU. And as that relationship changes over the next few years, it needs to be reflected in these documents as well, which is Chapter Three of our city code. As we get into some of these projects, the control tower, and we work on the approach, community involvement will be a very big key to the success of these projects. And this facility is already playing an important role as far as community involvement. So if we, we're looking at a period of five years, if we look back, if we do spend a little time in review, you know, five years ago, this was our terminal. This is a Shacklet's photography picture of it, probably in the 50s, and it really didn't change much, as you can see through time. But in five years, this is what has evolved in this beautiful terminal and has become a very integral part of our community, and especially this room has been a part of our community. Hanger One project, which just came online this year, has given Mike Jones Aircraft Sales a new opportunity to bring on a whole new line of aircraft with his Lock &amp; Key Beechcraft Baron. He's increased his staff from 15 to 20 mechanics and avionics technicians already just within the last year. So that's a really great success story, and we're going to see some more opportunities for jobs coming through Mike and his staff there. So what in five years, what we see here is really, I think we're laying out some projects that are in a timetable of three to five years, and should be really interesting to see what we can do to control all those, to touch on our safety of our approaches, our airspace management, and then facilities here to reach that demand that we have in the aviation community. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them at this time.
I was just curious. You were saying sometimes we have people coming in overnight?
Yes.
What do we charge them to park or store?
It matters on the size of the aircraft. The larger the aircraft, the larger the charge. I think overnight, it could be $10 to $30 just to park overnight. And then hangar rent for overnight could be $30 to $50, depending on what the aircraft is. And unfortunately, we don't have many opportunities or space available for overnight parking. And this becomes an important thing, such as example, as someone comes in, and especially this time of year, we might have frost or cold or snow that's coming in, to have that inside and away from the elements so that they can fly out in the morning without having to scrape off ice or wait for that thaw out is important.
Yeah, that's interesting. It costs less to park a plane than it is to park your car overnight.
And that's, as we develop these things, those costs will come in. And what we're seeing as far as rents in T-hangers and things like that are going to go up dramatically. And it's just, that's the way we're going to have to go, and that's what we're seeing across the board. What we see, and how we place Murfreesboro is somewhere between the John C. Two Nashville, the Shelbyvilles and Fatvilles and Telemahas. We always find ourselves somewhere in the middle there, and that's kind of our market research, along with how do we amateurize that debt over a reasonable amount of time.
Do we have a lot of corporate?
Yes, we do. Yes. And they're in and out every day. They're not just from Murfreesboro. We see people coming in from Franklin and Brentwood wanting to use our airport. It's easy access off of 840. I think they like the facilities. And so that's, it's kind of cool to see where people are coming from to use this airport.
That's nice.
Chad, how's the state make up their mind on how much you get? Do they, do they spread the peanut butter evenly? Do they look at the needs of a particular airport?
In the past, they were really flushed with money. Our biggest contributor to the aviation tax was FedEx. And since 2015, that's been waning. So now we've going in, the state has created a priority ranking system, and so there's kind of a point system there. And so to have your approaches clear, you get some points. To have all your grants taken care of, you get some points. Certain things could be detracting from points. And then there are projects like pavement maintenance and approaches that send to be more higher ranking as compared to, we need money for development of hangar pads or anything like that. So right now, we are in a good shape. When we moved that threshold, that took care of our approach temporarily. And so we're in good shape, but again, the priority ranking system, we're moving ahead on some projects like the RPZ purchasing properties that isn't important to the state, but it's important to our airport. So those are the kind of financial situations we find ourselves in right now. So a lot of these projects, you'll see a much heavier local share than what we've seen in the past if we want to continue to see this progress at this airport and what we can provide the community.
Council members, the discussion that would be beneficial, Craig and Sam had asked me to sit in on a meeting last week, and it was really talking about what's next with the airport. And I think currently, we have 49 people who are on a waiting list that have paid $250 for T-hangers. Smyrna just built 60,000 square feet of hangar space. That was private hangar space. And publicly, I'm not for allowing, you know, if there's a situation that someone wants to build a hangar and they're going to open a business like Mike Jones or like TDK on what they've built, I think that's one thing. But allowing the private sector to build T-hangers to compete, to rent against us, that doesn't make sense in my mind because, you know, we can borrow money from a financial standpoint, a lot cheaper than the market is right now. So what I think the council really needs to talk about and what I would advocate for, we're getting ready to start next year, the infrastructure work that Chad was showing on the 27 acres that already has been funded or going to start. And I think what you're going to see with MTSU relocating, you're going to see a lot of people who will want to come to Murfreesboro that currently wouldn't want to be based in Murfreesboro, just from a traffic standpoint. You know, I know several people that are from Rutherford County have their planes based in Telemah or at John Toon. I think you're going to see people want to migrate back down here. So my suggestion was to come up with some kind of pro forma to say, this is how much we think it's going to cost to build T-hangers. Really put that out to the 49 people who are on the waiting list and say, look, we need more than $250. Now we're going to have to put some skin in the game, and we're going to guarantee that we're going to build these units. And then at the same time, look at more of the 100 to 100 by 120 larger hangar for that transient larger airplanes. And then start recruiting for an avionics business or aircraft maintenance business, people who want to come and be part of the airport. I think you're going to see in the next two or three years that this place will transition more to where not only the jobs that we have now, you're going to see more people who are going to want to have job creation at the airport. And, you know, right now, general aviation, I still remember these numbers, and it may have changed somewhat. I think MTSU was about 70, 70-some-odd percent of our operations, but they were about 21 or 22% of our income. And, you know, so the general aviation and corporate subsidizes the majority of our operations. And I think what you're going to see when that fleet moves out, you're going to see the revenue at the airport will go up substantially because it costs a whole lot more to fuel, for example, a jet than it is to fuel a plane that holds 50 gallons of gas. It's $6 a gallon. And so I think there's going to be some opportunities for us that are, that I think will be substantial moving forward, especially with the tower, hopefully. So we need to, at some point, have that discussion of how we're going to fund it, if we fund that with general fund money or if we fund that with new debt to be able to move forward. The airport's so different because it takes so long to get something started and going through the process. So I mean, if we say today that we want to build new T-hangers, it can be two years before that process is finished. Craig, will that be coming to us in the future to show us how you guys are recommending to fund and what you're recommending to do?
Yes, we've already asked Barge to come up with some estimates of different hangar costs of building different hangers, and we'll bring that to administration, and we'll put some nice spreadsheets together for you.
Yeah, I think it'll take a few meetings as we plan forward, and we'll keep the airport commission obviously in the loop on the whole thing as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Chad. Congratulations on your award, Chad.
Congratulations, Chad.
All right, we have a subrecipient presentation, community development.
I guess now it's good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'd like to take a little bit of your time to give you an overview of the community development department. We receive most of our funding from HUD and Tennessee Housing and Development Agency. We receive a total of three grants that total $1.5 million a year, and that does vary from year to year. HUD provides us two grants, which are the CDBG grant, which stands for Community Development Block Grant, and then they also give us the Home Investment Partnership Grant. The CDBG grant is to aid in prevention or elimination of slump or blight or to meet an urgent need. We receive about $950,000 a year for this grant. The Home Investment Grant is used to increase the supply of affordable housing, and we receive about $500,000 a year on that grant. The grant from THDA is referred to as the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is approximately $130,000 a year, and is used to improve the quality of homeless shelters and for rapid rehousing services to prevent homelessness. Each grant has its own set of rules on how we can spend the money, but one common goal is to assist low to moderate income families, or what we refer to as LMI families. Each year, we begin to prepare an action plan on how we plan to spend this money. This usually begins in February, March with a public meeting to receive input from the public on how they think we should spend this money. This plan will show how much we plan to spend or to allocate for each of the activities. These activities, and it depends upon the grant, include administration of the funds, fair housing activities, public infrastructure, public facilities, public services, or grants to local nonprofits. We also do residential rehabilitation projects and development of LMI housing, low moderate income housing. The most common activities we're currently doing is public service grants to local nonprofits that offer services to low and moderate income families. We're rehabilitating owner-occupied housing. We will remove diseased and dead trees and down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. In addition, we are currently funding a study on what barriers exist around the square and prevents second floors, basements from being rented. In the past, we've used our funding for construction of infrastructure in LMI neighborhoods. We can also purchase facilities that focus on assisting LMI families. Last year, we supplied a portion of the funds to purchase a daycare on the west side of town for use by Murfreesboro City Schools. In turn, the city schools must maintain an enrollment level of 51% of LMI families. Rehabilitation of owner-occupied houses is the category most requested by the public. We currently have a backlog that will last us until the next fiscal year. Eligible costs for housing rehab are only costs associated with bringing the home up to minimum property standards or increasing the energy efficiency of the home. This can include installing a new roof, replacing windows, or in some situations, structural repairs. We've added, we've asked a couple of subrecipients to follow up after me to explain how they are helping LMI families. Randy Allen with Habitat. Free Manity will be the first speaker, and then Julie Young, who's the program director at Barnum's Vision, will follow after him. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Holtz? Randy?
So, good afternoon, Mayor and council and distinguished staff. Many of you know me. I'm Randy Allen. I am the COO for the Rutherford County Area Habitat for Humanity, and I, Terry, I know, spent some time with y'all at a council meeting a few weeks ago, so I don't want to go over rehash some of the things she shared. But she was unable to attend today, had a conflict, so y'all drew the short straw. So first of all, I wanted to say how much we appreciate the partnership of the City of Murfreesboro and the Community Development Department. There's a huge demand for affordable housing in our community and across our county, and I'm fortunate to work for an organization that is doing a lot to address. I'm fortunate to work for an organization that is doing a lot to address that. We could always do more and we hope to do more. But, kind of what I wanted to touch on was the fact that we, last time we opened our application, we received over 600, well, 600 people picked up applications. We got over 300 back completed and our family selection committee, after making home visits and assessing the current need, decided on 22 families that are currently either have completed or are somewhere in our program. The things that maybe people don't realize is how much work a homeowner for Habitat puts in. They will do 300 to 350 hours of partnership hours working on their house and somebody else's and 50 hours of financial literacy, both pre and post-purchase. As most of you know, we do not give houses away, we sell them. And the reason that we can, and we sell them at the appraised value, which you may be interested to know, that our most current appraisal in our Legacy Point subdivision is 330,000. So, many of you may wonder, how do we make that affordable in our current environment? And we do that with our partnership with the City of Murfreesboro and Community Development and many other partners. Most of our funding for Habitat is on the back end. So sponsors and volunteers and everything help us lower the build cost, but without the funding that we receive as we, through the partnership, on home down payment assistance is what we mainly use it for. And so, with the Community Development Block Grant Funds, that's 10,000, we apply that to the remaining mortgage, what the homeowner is unable to afford or the gap between purchase and affordability. With the home grant, we're doing the same thing, except we're able to put $14,999 back into the pot and that allows us to build the next house and so it's a cycle. We dedicated home number 190 last week at Legacy Point. We've got about 24 houses completed out there. It's a 76-home subdivision out on Twin Oak Drive. In addition to, in addition to the fact that we benefit from the monetary grant from Community Development, we have also been able to utilize that grant as a matching fund for other grants. And so, last year, for example, TBA came to us and said, hey, we've got some money, but we need a grant to match it to. So, we submitted our home grant that we got from Community Development and received an additional $20,000 grant from TBA. So, it's not just about, hey, are we utilizing your funding, but we're utilizing it to get additional funding to help our homeowners. We're a hand-up, not a hand-out program. Like I said, we do purchase. The homeowner is required to save 1 percent of the purchase price while they're in our program. So, having said all that, there's probably a lot more detail I could give you. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. If I don't know the answer, I'll see if I can get it, so.
Randy, when did Habitat start in?
So, we're celebrating our 34th year in Rutherford County. Next year will be 35. So, started in a little bitty office down in the basement of the First Presbyterian Church over in downtown and with just a bunch of volunteers. Habitat requires you to build a certain number of homes before you can become an affiliate and so they had to build the first 10 or 11 and that's how we got started with just a bunch of good people in our community, seeing the need and trying to address it.
Randy, have you, y'all just build homes. You ever thought about, like, townhomes? And maybe you already have done, I'm just thinking of, you know, 300 applications picked up, but you put 22 in the program. I was just thinking, is there a way to maybe to grow that number if you went maybe a townhome route? I don't know if it's any of that way or not.
Yes, the short answer is yes. It's the same question I was asking back in 2016 of Terry in my other position, when she came in and said, hey, we're, we just built four houses, you know, we're excited about it. I said, what's your problem? You can't build more than four houses? And she said, oh, no, no, we can build them, we just don't have the property to build them. So, it's constantly, we're constantly looking for property, but the subdivision, you know, has been a huge improvement. Nashville has moved to building townhomes and we're just probably two or three years behind that before, but we're already looking at it. And so, as property becomes more premium, it just makes sense to try to utilize it efficiently.
Okay.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy?
Hello. Thank you for having us. Looking, little PowerPoint thing, there it is. I'm Julie Young. Thank you for having us, Mayor McCarland, City Council, Chief Bowen, all the guests. Thank you for having us. I'm a social worker at the Barnabas Vision. The Barnabas Vision has been in Murfreesboro for 12 years. Our director, David Coggan, is right here. We are passionate about serving people in our community and through the grant that the city gave us in the last 14 months, we had 19 families that were experiencing homelessness placed into housing. That's 19 families that were living on the streets, are in their car, are in a shelter, that because of our partnership with you, we were able to get into housing. And then, we helped 41 families to avoid eviction because of our partnership with you. These are families that had received eviction notices and had 30 days to come up with the money. And that's in the last 14 months because of this grant. It's money well-spent. You spent your money well. These are your neighbors that are no longer on the streets because of this money. And I just wanted to tell you about a couple of my clients. I'm really passionate about the work we do. We not only help them financially with this money, but Barnabas Vision is able to provide case management and wraparound services to support them. Some only maybe need a month, but some we've been working with for eight or nine months that they need that support. One of the clients was a teenager that had aged out of foster care, that the police had to respond to an activity and we were contacted and we were able to get her into housing with this grant and have been able to help her graduate from high school. She is working now, she has full-time employment, she is paying for most of her rent. It was a very sad situation, very, very sad situation. But through this grant, we have been able to, over six months, help with her rent and get her into housing and she's in a very stable place right now. I have another client, she was living in her car. She had income, but she didn't have money to pay a deposit because first month's deposit plus first month's rent is often too much for someone to come up with, even someone that has income. We're averaging about 1,200 for a deposit and it was too much for her to come up with. So, we got her into housing. She's no longer living in her car. She's in a safe place, she's paying her rent now and she's doing very well. I had another client, very sweet man, who his wife passed away in February and he had two young daughters and he is disabled. He cannot walk and he has income, but when he lost his wife's income and before Social Security Survivor benefits jumped in, he could not pay his rent. And we were able to pay his rent until the Social Security Survivor Benefit kicked in because that was about a six-month process before he got that. He did not have life insurance. But that is a man and two young children that would have been on the streets without this grant. And I wanted to tell you about one more of my clients. She was living at a campground and she had cancer, stage three cancer, and she could not afford to get into housing and we were able, with this grant, to get her into housing. And so, that is 60 families, it's 138 people that are in housing because of this grant. And I just want to thank you so much, thank you so much for this money and partnering with the Barnabas Vision to help us get your neighbors into housing. So, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you get these people? Where do you all find them? Are they referred to you or how do you get these people?
Many are referrals and then many people just call our office. We've been around for 12 years. This is our first partnership with the city with a grant, so people know that this is what we do through private donations, so they call our office or we get referrals. I get schoolteachers that call me, we have the police that call us, I have people I go to church with that call and then we just have people call our office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor, I just, I want to thank these organizations for the, you know, the government does a lot of things good, but I think the, how they leverage the dollar that they get from the city into multiple dollars because of the volunteers that bring a passion and a heart, a true heart for the work that they're doing. We're a better community because of the work that Barnabas Vision and Habitat and many other nonprofits, but the money I consider well-spent and what you do to multiply those dollars, those few dollars that we give you. And thank you for the work that you do, for the passion for your work. It makes a difference in lives and it changes the trajectory of so many people in our community that otherwise wouldn't have a voice, might not have hope, might not have a future. And just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's move to, any questions on the CIP transfers as presented? All right, seeing that, we'll move to item nine and Chief Bowen is going to update us on the Real Time Crime Center.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes today and kind of update everyone on the status of the Real Time Crime Center. That's been a project that's been ongoing for some time now. And I just wanted to touch on three brief points, basically the transparency piece of it, kind of where we are now and what's next. I know that using this type of technology causes a lot of privacy concerns from citizens, so it's our continued goal. I know Larry Flowers recently did an informational video, put it out on social media and fortunately, a couple of news stations picked up on that and ran stories on what we were doing and what's behind the technology we're using and how we intend to apply it. We've also placed that video on our website to where anybody can just go to the MPD website, they can click the Real Time Crime Center link and they can look at a set of frequently asked questions and just kind of see the intent behind the center, the things that we're going to be using and just kind of be able to link to the TCAs that are related to this type of technology as well as our department policy, which shows that how we govern the use of those technologies internally. So, that was pretty important, getting that out there. Where we're at now, we've got two types of technology that have been approved by council and that is the LPR technology as well as the public safety camera systems. We have 48 of 57 ALPR cameras that are operational. They're currently placed on roadways that are not designated state routes, they're on municipal routes or secondary-type roads. The public safety camera systems, we're in possession of 17 of those and those are the video recording cameras that'll be pole-mounted as previously presented. The locations for those initial set of cameras are basically based on violent crime data or if we have addressed, or if we've noticed a specific area where a camera would be needed. These systems are movable and can be relocated as necessary. Right now, I was hoping that some of them would have been installed by now, but I think that they're still working through some permitting right-of-way things and I know that they're having a meeting as recently as this morning and seem to be making a lot of progress. So, hopefully, we'll see those things getting installed here in the very near future. So, basically, in summary, as far as what's been proposed and brought before council, we have the LPR technology up and running and we have the public safety video systems that are ready to be operational at any time. So, what's next? So, in our police department, we have a room that's designated as the Real Time Crime Center. So, it's furnished and it's got some components already up and running there, so I'll call it partially operational. So, it's our goal to have that room completely finished by the end of the first quarter in 2024 and, of course, we'll be coming to you with some recommendations here in the very near future. Additionally, we have requested and been approved for funding as part of Governor Lee's Violent Crime Grant and we'll be coming before you with additional proposals. The next one will probably be to incorporate gunshot detection technology into the crime center. And then, two other proposals that'll be forthcoming will involve the addition of LPR technology and this second round would be placed on state highways and that is a grant requirement. And then, we will also be asking for additional public safety camera systems. As we look in this technology, as we look at this technology too, we also are looking at ways to better partner. A lot of this technology is available to the public apartment complexes. Homeowners associations can buy LPR technology, they can buy video camera systems. What's protected is the databases, so they don't have the access to the databases that we do. But one of the things that I've been wanting to do since I was appointed chief in 2017 is the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program and just for various reasons, we've had to put that on the back burner. But I think with some of the emergence of this new technology, I think it's something that we're going to start working towards again and seeing if we can partner with some of these complexes and hopefully integrate this technology to where it can benefit all of us in some of these crime-related issues. I know there have been a lot of questions regarding privacy concerns, how this technology's going to be used and we're trying to be as open and transparent about what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish, so I'll be glad to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? All right, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll get an update on the Murfreesboro Community Investment Trust.
Real quick, the primary objective the trust has addressed now is to hire an outsourced financial, or chief financial officer, or chief investment officer, sorry, to decide how best to invest the trust funds to earn an adequate return over the next many, many years. They went through a process of requesting information from firms that are qualified to do this, that focus in the type of market that the trust would be in, had six, seven really good responses, narrowed it down to three, went through interviews all day, one day, to interview all three firms that came in. All of them were excellent firms. They selected a company called Marquette Associates. Marquette has been in this particular business about 40 years. They have about $360 billion in assets. They focus on institutional investors, so, you know, they're not a retail investment advisor. They focus on pension funds, foundations, things like the trust and that type of assets. They're based out of Chicago, but the unique part of Marquette was that they do have a local senior advisor and part owner of the firm that's in the Nashville area. So, they are local, which always helps because we'll do quarterly meetings with them to get advice on where the trust is at. They have submitted their agreement. We've, Legal has looked over it, Adams looked over it. Right now, it's in the process of their legal counsel taking a look at some changes we requested of that and once that happens in the GNI- local senior advisor and part owner of the firm that's in the Nashville area. So, they are local, which always helps because we'll do quarterly meetings with them to get advice on where the trust is at. They have submitted their agreement. We've, legal has looked over it, Adam's looked over it. Right now, it's in the process of their legal counsel taking a look at some changes we requested of that. And once that happens in the January timeframe, we'll probably have that approved and ready to go. We've targeted around mid-March, I think it was, to have the funds transferred over under their investment guidance and handling. So, a few steps to work through on that still, but progress is going pretty good on the trust board side. On the Committee on Contributions, which is the committee that decides on how the portion of that that's going to be distributed for what we used to call strategic partners, they've met. And I'll let Angela, she's around here somewhere, give you a real brief update on where they're at.
The Community Investment Trust first application period opened in October of this year for projects to be funded in the upcoming fiscal year. Wanted to recognize that Committee on Contributions and Karen Lampert, our grant manager, who have been very, working very hard to make sure that it is all successful. The communications team has also worked hard to make sure that the nonprofits were given good information, knew what to expect, how to apply. Ms. Lampert conducted a webinar with nonprofits. Our webmaster working on the website. A lot of folks making sure that the information was given out well was important. And then nonprofits had the month of October in order to complete applications. Forty-four applicants were eligible to be, were entered and eligible to be reviewed by that committee. The committee is completing the review process now. They have until the end of the calendar year. And at the beginning of next year, we'll be making that decision on their recommendation for funding, which will go to the Board of Trustees by February 15th for approval and will be sent to council in March of 2024. The award notices to nonprofits who will be receiving that charitable contribution from the trust will be sent out by June 30th with funding to be distributed to the nonprofits beginning in July of 2024. Welcome. Any questions?
What's the maximum you'll distribute in a given year for this upcoming cycle?
Per agency or total?
In total.
So, the balance of the trust right now is about 52. At the end of the year, it'll be slightly more than, be close to 53, I guess it looks like, depending on the interest that it makes between now and then. And so, the distribution is 5% of that, which would be about 2.6, somewhere in there. 85% of that will go to the city. So, about 2.2 will go to the city. And then about $380,000, $380,000, $390,000 will go to the Committee for Contributions for Distribution, which is pretty close. And I don't remember the number that we did last year for strategic partners, setting aside the governmental strategic partners, just the strategic nonprofits partners, but that's pretty close to that amount.
It is. It's actually more. Like, there will be an increase in that piece.
So, that's how the numbers break down right now.
So, you've got roughly $400,000 to play with?
Yeah, slightly, probably a little bit less than that, but somewhere in there.
A little bit less than that because we have to take out the expenses of the trust.
Okay. And that's for 40-some-odd applicants, right?
Forty-some-odd applicants are eligible. And then the committee will be determining and prioritizing scoring those for their recommendations for distribution.
Doesn't mean that all 40 are going to get them. It could be the top five, top 10.
Correct.
If you wanted to break it down.
Of those, of the applications that were submitted, their funding request, it was $1.3 billion. Obviously, all of those will not be...
Billion or million?
Million with an M.
Okay.
Not a B. Because that would be bold.
Yeah. And there, and within the, there's categories that the trust sets out where they hit maximum. So, it's, you can't just divide up the numbers. You, you know, certain categories will hit a maximum amount that can be distributed.
What's the range, Angela? I mean, some probably ask for the moon, some probably just said, here's the bare minimum I need. I'm just kind of curious.
Yes. And the information that we gave them before and in speaking with them and working through the webinar and working with the committee to really put together the application, we tried to communicate that really well so that all of the nonprofits that had been previously funded by the city or that had asked for funding or that we were aware of doing work in the community and then just, of course, the public information that's going out, trying to make sure that they knew what to ask for. We also worked, kind of basically working with, backwards with the numbers, because the trust guidelines limit the percentage per agency. We told applicants to expect to, the maximum that they could potentially receive would be around $65,000 and to expect a $10,000 to $12,000 average receipt for this first year. Obviously, as the trust grows, then those opportunities will grow as well. So, they were given kind of some reasonable guidelines to ask for. And then the committee will have to work through what that looks like to determine where it fits within that range. But the guidelines that were set in the original document limited, you know, for example, that committee could not come and say, all of the money is going to one agency. There were guidelines and benchmarks in place because of that.
There, there used to be some limits for, like, when we did, it used to be the outside agency funding.
Yes.
There were limits for first-time people that request the first time. Is there anything I got anymore?
There was not for that piece. So, what we did, we asked for a lot of information. Some of the guidelines included the fact that they operated here in Murfreesboro, that they were a year-round agency. There were several different things in the guidelines. Nothing based on having received previous funding, although, you know, we, of course, do ask for budget information. We ask for how long they've been in existence as an agency. But the committee basically giving the information so that they can make decisions on that, but not adding any restrictions to that competitive process as it related to the outside agency or strategic partnership funding. A lot of what we were communicating to those groups was how with this new process that that would open up for a, like, a baseline competitive grant process.
That 40 is substantially more than we ever, I mean, people have made requests before. I just wondered, new requesters, of that 40, do you have any idea?
Of how many were, of new?
Were new, first time?
We, excluding the government agencies in the past, I believe it was 32 nonprofits that had received funding in various formats from the city before. Some of those were like $2,500. Very few were more than $20,000, you know, kind of maxing there. So, there were definitely a lot of those same applicants. Some of the agencies that you have seen before were, of course, applying. Again, there were some new applications. And then there were some applications from some agencies that even though we had not funded them through the regular operating budget as a part of strategic partnerships, we had worked with through community development and those CDBG processes and all of those. So, there were a lot of familiar names coming in in those applications and then some new ones as well. I know, I remember a report very recently from United Way saying that in Rutherford County, there were almost 8,000 registered nonprofits just in Rutherford County. So, that includes, you know, it includes faith-based organizations. It includes some nonprofits that are not very active and then also some very large ones. So, there are certainly a lot of people that are in that realm here in Murfreesboro.
Would it be too much to ask? Just, I'm kind of curious, like, who are the 40 that apply?
I mean, I'd be glad to provide a list. You know, some of the, some of the agencies, you know, like, when you think of some that we have funded in the past, you know, of course, Child Advocacy Center, the Domestic Violence Center, the Habitat for Humanity, Barnabas, like, that we just heard from, the American Red Cross, the, gosh, I'm on the, the Imagination Library, the Second Harvest Food Bank, like, a lot that were related more to welfare services, you know, for community welfare. Some that were related to literacy, of course, Read to Succeed, another one that you will see, Youth and Family Services, Victim Services, I think, some cultural arts applications, historic preservation, Discovery Center, Oakland's Meals on Wheels. I'd be glad to provide a list. I'm running out, but there's more.
Well, that's half of it right there. But yeah, a list would be great. I couldn't, that's...
Be happy to.
Were there, were there any, many minority?
Yes, ma'am.
Applicants?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I think the great thing about this, for Austin and Jamie, who were not on the council when we went through this MED discussion, you know, it was, personally, I think, for strategic partnerships inside our community, this will be the biggest game changer that, besides Christie Houston, in the part that politically is very important for us, it keeps the political side out of giving money to these organizations, which I can tell you from experience in many of y'all who sat up here. It was very uncomfortable every year during our discussion on budget to talk about strategic partnerships and pick winners and losers who we would give money to. And it was even more comfortable when a council member would bring up, hey, I'd like to give money to this organization. And then you've got, at that time, you'd have other organizations that were in the room and they're like, well, how come no one's bringing me up to get, you know, additional funds? The part that even was, I don't want to say troubling, but from a monitoring standpoint, once we gave the funds, we couldn't even monitor what they were doing with the funds. I mean, we could say, look, it was for XYZ organization, but we didn't really have the opportunity to go back and say, okay, show us where you wrote the check that your funds are going, you know, not just to administrative costs, you know, to your general fund or your budget. So, I think the great thing about this group, we've all put together a very detailed committee that they're, most, everyone that we've put in here are very versed on community organizations. And so, when someone applies, they can really weed through and go from a standpoint of they're getting the money, but then keep up that the money is actually being put to use, which is important. Because, you know, Bill, the number, if it's $400,000, our total, if I remember right, our total strategic partnerships that we would give money out to was about $480,000. And that included people that we had to give money to, like Hotel Motel Tax and Chamber of Commerce that we're obligated to. This number is almost double what we were giving through the taxpayer side.
It's only going to grow.
Yeah, and it'll grow every year and have some accountability. You know, United Way, 10 years or 15 years ago, went through a change to where they just weren't giving money out. They were doing it based on measurable metrics to say, what are you doing with the money that you're given? And now, we can, we don't have to do that, but this group can look and say, I mean, too much is given, much is expected. If you're getting a big check, what did you do with it? And how, show us the measurable metrics that what you got the money for is what it was being used for.
Absolutely. One of the things Ms. Brown had mentioned was those expenses. One of the things that has been purchased has been software. It's Confound It, a grant management software. And then Karen and I have gone through training. She's way smarter than me, so I get to latch on. And it, what we can do by tracking the process itself, being able to create spreadsheets and run lists and follow up and do a lot of tracking from year to year to allow that to be part of the decision-making moving forward, has been a really good investment. We've been very pleased with that.
You know, folks, we've all read, hey, you give a dollar to an organization and 94 cents of it goes to administrative costs and 6% actually goes to, I mean, and, you know, you start researching on how much organizations are categorizing towards administrative costs and you start finding that if an organization has 25% to 30% of their money given to administrative costs, you start running into issues. And I don't think that's why we set it up that way. So...
Mayor, probably, this thought came to me, one of the biggest points I think needs to be made is that funding these agencies aren't coming out of our general fund. So, that's something that I think most cities would admire.
Bill, you know, this, we got into a large discussion as a council on whether government should be funding...
Outside, yeah.
Outside agencies and that, you know...
Donation dollars, basically.
So, you know, should the government be giving money to charitable organizations? And the reason that we did MED and set it up the way that we set it up is now there is a funding mechanism to help those agencies, just like Barnabas Vision and Habitat for Humanity, that provide a valuable service to our community that the government can't provide. But now, it's taken from the political side and it's, from a standpoint of what the organization is doing, which I think, I mean, y'all were, Jamie, you were up here when we were in the council chambers and you had, during budget, you would have 100 of these individuals who'd be sitting in the organization. They used to have to come. And we'd go through every single request and it was painful to see those organizations that all do so good in the community. And then here, we're talking about whether we're going to give them a $2,500 increase or a $5,000 increase. And, you know, it's almost, it was painful from a standpoint, like, hey, we wish you could give you more. And now, that group can do that. So, sorry to get on a soapbox, but this has been a big one and it will be a big one 20 years from now.
Of course.
All right. We'll move to October dashboard. Any questions for Aaron? Hey, folks, I will say this, council members, if y'all get a chance, I talked with Jennifer last week.
Taking nobody's hold.
If any organization that's in our city right now that is under the gun and not dealing with happy people all the time, our people who are on the front line, who are collecting everyone's tax money when they're coming in, maybe send an email and let that team know how much you appreciate them because it is a tough time of the year for our frontline workers who are working in Jennifer's department and having people come in who are paying their taxes. Because typically, most people are not very happy about that when they, when they come in. So, maybe let them know that you appreciate what they're doing. I know they're working hard.
Jennifer, I have a question. Do we have from last year, many people or more people that are unable to pay their taxes this year? Have you seen an increase in that?
What we've seen an increase in this year is we do have a lot more who are paying online, which has helped us out. We also have had an increase in our staffing that have been absent this year. So, that's where our staff has been a little more stressed. As far as those who haven't been able to pay because it wasn't a reappraisal the year this year, last year is where we felt that more and where there were more who had that issue. We do make sure to let citizens who are eligible for tax relief and tax freeze, we are sure to tell them about it and to help them with those applications or to tell them to go to the county to apply for tax freeze if they're eligible. Because we want to make sure that those citizens who are eligible can apply and get that.
I often wondered, the people who cannot pay their taxes and don't pay them, what do we do? Is there a penalty? I mean, do we give them so many months? I know it increases percentage-wise, but some people just can't pay them. So, what do we do with those people?
There is an interest penalty and after two years, it gets sent to Chancery Court for the property tax, the real property tax.
Do we get many?
I don't know off the top of my head how many we send over to Chancery Court.
Otherwise, but I mean, we do get some that actually falls into that, right?
We do have some who fall into it. And then after a certain amount of time in Chancery Court, they do end up going to, they get sold under Chancery Court.
Wow. Yeah. As I said, I just figured with the economy like it is, we would see more now, you know, especially with the county making their big increase.
And I don't know the number off the top of my head of, if that has increased from year to year. But we do have every year some that do get sent to Chancery Court.
Wow.
The number of properties that actually gets sent to tax sale is pretty small because often, often what you have happen is if there's a mortgage on the property, the bank is going to pay the taxes and then figure out an arrangement with the property owner, whether that's, you know, whether that's modifying the mortgage or whether that's foreclosing on the property. But the few things, the few properties that go to, and it can vary. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's been as few as five, you know, sometimes it's in, you know, in the teens. know, in the teens. But most of those that go to tax sale are properties where there is no mortgage. And so there's, and they're, they're usually, and usually, and usually to the, the person who, who owns the property is not, is going to get some proceeds because they often sell for more than what is owed in taxes.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, for people like me that is on fixed income and going to get that same income the rest of my life, with all this increase in different areas, you know, I was just curious. Thank you.
Jennifer, I know you said they were stressed, but I, I went and paid mine and they were just as pleasant as, and as nice. I didn't detect it, so they are, they're putting on a great face.
Yeah, me too. They were really...
I have a great staff.
All right, you have a bunch of beer permits.
We do. We have a regular permit for an ownership and name change for a grocery market located at 1,007 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And eight special event beer permits for Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce events on multiple dates. The applicants have met requirements for a permit and are recommended for approval pending final building and codes inspections for the regular permit and special event permit for the special event beer permits.
Motion, second.
Please hold the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McCarland?
Aye. Any statements to be made?
No, sir.
You have the business from staff.
What we thought we'd do, if council would like it, is to give council an update on the City Works project and where we're at on, on effectuating that across all the departments it is. It's a large, it's a very large, very big project and it's been around for a long time. But there's been a lot of intense work on it the last few years. And I thought if we could have Mr. Head just give an update to council real quick on, on where we're at with that. It's a, it's a system that, come on up, Ryan, it's a system that takes care of buildings and code and planning primarily, and then there, there is some work on water and sewer side that we can also do. So it, it encompasses a lot of different departments and really is important to the workflow. So we thought we'd give council an update on that.
Good afternoon. Yeah, what's going around right now is just a handout of this, this presentation is in there as well, plus a more detailed project status report. The easiest way to, to go through is just a couple of slides through this. One of the things that, about this product is, or City Works, is, there is two product suites that the city has. One of them is what we call asset management. It is AMS side. It has been around, we have implemented it. There are three major components of it, which are the service request, order, work order, and then store room, which is about to start. The various departments, as you can see, has implemented this since 2021. The other piece, which is the most, I feel like the most complicated part of the project, is the, what we call PLL, which is permanent licensing of land. And it has the ability or has the functionality of workflow, which also has the submission of applications and then ability to fees and payments and collaboration with clients, both clients externally and then internally as well. And this is just a list of some of the departments that are involved with those workflows. So just setting, to understand that there's two aspects to it. To understand the implementation, actually, this shows up better on the screen than it does on the paper. But this right here is one workflow that has to be developed from, basically from scratch. Kevin and his team has been working diligently on the sign side of this. This is just one workflow. And doing a real quick math, this workflow involves 67 different boxes, 67 different decision points that have to be decided on or have to be determined how to handle. And also, there is emails that go out on this workflow. All the wording for every email has to be thought through and decided on. And just to give you an idea, there is at least 55 workflows that have to be developed or are in some stage of being developed, whether it's complete or still working on. The idea behind this screen is not to try to understand it, but it's also to understand that every single workflow has to go through this same process. And so it's a quite onus task. To talk about the AMS side, which I mentioned about the asset management, this here gives you a picture of what the departments have implemented since 2021 and then what particular module of that AMS product suite they have implemented. So you've got work, work order, service request, and then the latest is store room at the bottom, which will be for the PD. Again, this started in 2021. It has been well implemented throughout the departments. And, and so the asset management side is quite, quite heavily used. The one that gets the most attention or talked about is the PLL side. That is the implementation that we're currently in right now. As up at the top, there are a couple of points and modules that we have already implemented that we've been using for planning and building and codes. As you can see, zoning enforcement, notice, notice violation and the code enforcement. Those have been around since 2021. The one that is, the part that is most, most involved with the workflow is the section on the bottom. And that's what we're working on right now. The planning, phase two development, that is actively working, are actively going through the workflows with the various departments. The departments that are involved is, of course, planning, building and codes, engineering. We have an upgrade that is coming that we have to take and we need to take because some of the functionality that we're missing or that would enhance us is in that upgrade as well as being able to take a payment integration that is actively occurring as well. If you, there is another component to this product, project, which is a product called OnBase. That is the ability to submit the plans online and be able to route them to individual departments, both internally, externally, so that they can market up the plans. That is in the implementation part as well. So again, there's a lot of work going on, a lot of the departments that are involved in it. It does take time for them to think through all of those different decision points, but that's what's going on at this point in time. Do you have any questions?
Licensed software, is that basically what it is, the City Works? What is City Works? Is that a?
It is a licensed, it is a software package that the city purchased. And like I said, it has two components to it, one for asset management and the other one is for the permits and land licensing that's the workflow engine, which, like I said, involves a lot of departments.
So it's kind of the automate, manage, streamline workflows.
Integrate that with each department.
Integrate that through the departments, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other business for, for staff? Austin had noted that everyone has their name tags now, so he knows who the staff, who everyone is.
Nice enough the staff is, I appreciate Chad and others putting that out, but even you've got other city staff back there.
Anything from city council members? Craig, this will be our last meeting of the year, will it not?
No, 21st.
21st, okay.
Meeting on the 21st.
The blimp flying around the city. I keep getting...
Smyrna now has in their hanger, they have two blimps that they're bringing people all around the world to learn to train to fly blimps.
You serious?
You're serious.
That's what it is?
That's what it is.
Okay.
I won't be at the 21st meeting, so everybody have a Merry Christmas.
I think the blimps, I think the blimps from China.
That's, I'm, what I'm getting at, everybody keeps saying, is that a Chi? I'm like, whatever.
They're not, they're not landing at our airport.
All right, seeing no further business, we'll stand adjourned.